...nice, only in the summertime. I miss the beaches and the rivers and the fun. Music playing loud and the people showing love. And it no matter if me living up abroad, where things is not so bad, nowhere no better than me yard. And I know this, so they bad views and they talk. Things is not so bad as the home. It's like home, that's my home. Tell you about home. It's like home. When I'm in Jamaica. When I'm in Jamaica. It feels like home. It feels like, feels like, feels like home. It feels like home. When I'm in Jamaica.
Residents of St. James, let's continue the conversation on Building Jamaica. Join Prime Minister Andrew Holness for a town hall on housing and land on Thursday, August 31, starting at 6:00 PM at Harmony Beach Park, Montego Bay. Join us on location or watch and share your questions and thoughts on the JIS and OPM social media platforms. Come for the discussion on housing and land. Building Jamaica, we want to hear from you.
You know who have the gun there? Stop wallackin' the notice, you notice.
The National Identification System, NIDS, has endured a long storied journey from inception to realisation. It began in the 1970s with the case for a national registration system with each person from birth issued with a unique number. By the 1990s, the Electoral Advisory Committee, EAC, made a recommendation for the establishment of a body to implement a national registration system. And as such, Cabinet approved the establishment of a national registration unit in the Ministry of Health in 1993, leading to the tabling of a national registration bill in 1995, which was later presented to Parliament in the year 2000. In July 2011, approval was given for the national registration unit to be transferred from the Ministry of Health to the Office of the Prime Minister. Then, in September 2011, the GOJ received a US $670,000 grant from the Inter-American Development Bank to commence the preparatory work required for the implementation of NIDS. The NIDS project was officially launched at the Jamaica House on September 27, 2011. By December of that same year, Cabinet approved the development of a NIDS policy. This was followed by the signing of a memorandum of understanding between EGOV Jamaica Limited and the Government of Jamaica to provide technical support in the management of the ICT consultancy required to design the NIDS architecture. In November 2016, the NIDS White Paper was tabled in Parliament, STEM. Also in that same year, the Office of the Prime Minister initiated an international competitive bidding process to identify a consortium of international and local experts to supply the national identification system solution. That process lasted two years and concluded in 2019 when a contract was awarded to the PBS Consortium made up of entrusted data card, PBS Jamaica Group of Action and Registration Act of 2017 was null and void and of no legal effect. Committed to realising the vision of the NIDS, the government recalibrated its approach with the designing of a new NIDS policy, which led to the Prime Minister, the Most Honourable Andrew Holness, tabling a new National Identification and Registration Act 2020 in December 2020, which made provisions for a voluntary NIDS.
I table a bill shortly entitled the National Identification and Registration Act 2020.
Committed to an inclusive effort, a joint select committee comprising both political parties to review the new NIDS bill was formed. The first sitting of the committee started on January 5, 2021, and various groups, organisations and individuals were allowed to make submissions to the committee. On Tuesday, July 6, 2021, Honourable Delroy Chuck laid on the table of the House of Representatives the report of the Joint Select Committee.
Madam Speaker, I beg to lay on the table of the House a copy of the report of the Joint Select Committee on its deliberations on a bill shortly entitled the National Identification and Registration Act 2020.
The House of Representatives on Tuesday, July 20, approved the report of the Joint Select Committee.
The question before the House is that the report be now approved. Those in favour, those against, the eyes have it.
The legislation made provisions for a voluntary and secure national identification system for Jamaica and a bill entitled the National Identification and Registration Act 2021 was tabled.
Madam Speaker, I beg to give notice that at the next meeting of the House, I will move to introduce and have read a first time a bill shortly entitled the National Identification and Registration Act 2021.
Later that year, on September 21, 2021, the House of Representatives began debating on the NIDS, which was eventually passed in the House of Representatives on October 13, 2021, and by the Senate on November 19, 2021.
I am honoured to rise once more today. This time to open the debate on the National Identification and Registration Act 2021.
So for the most part, the opposition is supportive.
Respect for myself and others.
HAJ is a self-founded agency of the Jamaican government, and we are responsible for the development, construction and sale of housing solutions for...
Outside, particularly the ministers, the members of Parliament, the councillors, residents, everyone on the outside, we're ready to begin. Thank you so much for giving us this warm welcome in Montego Bay. Give yourselves a round of applause. Thank you for the warm welcome on behalf of the Prime Minister. We're talking about land and housing today. And we are very happy to be here in Montego Bay at the great Harmony Beach Park. So ladies and gentlemen, as we begin, may I ask you to stand for the playing of the National Anthem of Jamaica. The best national anthem anywhere in the world. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please remain standing. It is our custom in Jamaica to do this very...
People, we may take care of it and make it much better than we have received it. As we come together, Lord, to discuss this matter, we pray your blessings upon this gathering. Be with all that you have called them, to be faithful to you and to the mandate you have blessed them with. Bless Montego Bay, Lord, and all the communities here in. Bless the parish of St. James. Bless Jamaica, land we love. Bless us for Christ's sake. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, you may be seated. Thank you so much, Reverend Shim Hiu, for the warm welcome and the kind prayers. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my privilege to be your moderator this evening. Our Deputy Prime Minister, the Honourable Dr Horace Chan. One of our speakers today, the Honourable Edmund Bartlett, the Minister of Tourism. Members of Parliament, I beg your pardon. Before we get to members of Parliament, let me tell you the other ministers who are here. The Honourable Homer Davis, the Minister of State in the Office of the Prime Minister. Your Minister of Local Government, the Honourable Desmond Mackenzie. The Honourable Marlene Malahou Fort, the Minister of Legal and Constitutional Affairs. Those are the ministers I'm seeing so far who are with us. May I also welcome all members of Parliament who are here. I see Miss Tamika Davis from over there in Hannover. Hi, MP Davis. His worship, the Mayor, Councillor Leroy Williams, Mayor of Montego Bay, and members of the Montego Bay Municipal... A big pardon. Your Minister of State in the Office of the Prime Minister, who is hosting us here, your former mayor as well, the Honourable Homer Davis, CD, JP, MP, who will come and give us the welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Madame Moderator Naomi Francis. The Most Honourable Andrew Holness, ONPC, MP, Prime Minister of Jamaica. The Honourable Dr Horace Chan, CD, MP, Deputy Prime Minister and Minister of National Security. The Honourable Edmund Bartlett, CD, MP, Minister of Tourism. The Honourable Marlene Malahou Fort, KC, MP, Minister of Legal Affairs, Legal and Constitutional Affairs. Honourable Desmond Mackenzie, CD, MP, Minister of Local Government and Community Development. Members of Parliament, Permanent Secretaries, Deputy Mayor of Montego Bay, Councillor Richard Vernon, representing his worship, the Mayor, Councillor Leroy Williams, and other members of the municipal corporation. Bishop, the Honourable Conrad Pitkin, CD, Custos Rotolorium of St. James. Members of the media, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. It gives me great pleasure this evening to extend a warm welcome to everyone present here today. A very special welcome to our Prime Minister, the Most Honourable Andrew Holness. I am delighted to see you all this evening, meeting as we continue to dialogue on building Jamaica with special focus on housing and land. Honourable Prime Minister, as we look forward to this cordial dialogue this evening, I must offer our tears' congratulations to you and the government for the decision to move the matter of housing and lands from just discussion to action. You are proving that you are a man of action, someone who is not afraid to act. I said that considering that consecutive administration over many decades openly recognised the challenges faced by our citizens in the areas of housing and land, but have done very little to adequately address the matter. Prime Minister, your presence here in Montego Bay this evening is living proof that you are a man of action and not a bag of munk. Montego Bay is home to well over 20 unplanned housing settlements. These communities truly reflect Montego Bay's development over many decades, dating back to the construction of Montego Bay Airport, now the Sankas International Airport, which created flankers and adjoining areas. The hotel sector, which created the Liliput, the Norwood, the Glendale, the retirement, and other areas where citizens come into the space in search of employment and through their creativity and determination, build homes which expand into communities. Although unplanned developments create homes for hard work in Jamaica, they also create infrastructural challenges which negatively impact the provision of basic utilities to include water, roads and electricity, and poses even a greater challenge for a fire department to respond or for members of the security force to serve and protect. For years, we have seen redevelopment of informal communities as being seen as a poor people thing. However, I am confident that under this administration, under the leadership of our Prime Minister, these communities will soon be formally structured and our citizens given the necessary support in order for them to feel and be empowered. Ladies and gentlemen, and positive outcome. Once again, thank you very much for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister Davis, for the warm welcome. I personally feel very welcomed here in Montego Bay after that. And too, for encapsulating the issue of land and housing. Ladies and gentlemen, the Prime Minister of Jamaica, the Most Honourable Andrew Holness. All right, so thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. You may be seated. Prime Minister, thank you so much. The people of Montego Bay and St. James and surrounding areas and other parishes, to include Trelawney, Hannover, Westmoreland are here with you. And so thank you so much for being with here, with us here this evening. Now here is where, ladies and gentlemen, we really want you to pay attention, roll up your sleeves and take it in, because it's important information now. May I invite Mrs Loy Edwards-Born from the National Land Agency. Lots of good work being done in terms of the NLA, what they have to show and offer. And so ladies and gentlemen, give her a round of applause. We're going to show you too visually what they've been doing. Thank you, everybody.
Most Honourable Prime Minister Andrew Holness, Deputy Prime Minister, other Ministers of Government, Mayor of Montego Bay, the Custos Rotolorium, Members of Parliament, Heads of Agencies, distinguished ladies and gentlemen. And I hope I got you all. Good afternoon. I'm here to talk to you a little about the National Land Agency and what it is that we do for you here in Jamaica. Who are we? The National Land Agency is what is known as an executive agency of the Government of Jamaica, and we report to the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation. The agency is headed by a Chief Executive Officer, Ms Sharice Walker, who unfortunately could not be here this afternoon, who holds the position... Persons who are going to make the application on your behalf, they come to you in your area, yes? How does it start? It starts first with the surveying of land parcels in that designated area in order to prepare what is called a cadastral map. And you notice that map, it has a number of parcels of land. You see that? All right. So that is the first thing that is done. Thereafter, the members of the... The members of the legal team from the adjudication services division of the agency will go into the area, they will interview the persons who are claiming an interest in the land. They will also go and interview the neighbours and community members, because what are we trying to do? To find out everything we can about the ownership of that parcel of land or those parcels of land to make a determination as to who the true owner is, yes? So, um... I think I'm going a little too fast or... Somebody go. All right, let me just come here, sorry. So as I said, we interview the neighbours and other community persons because we're trying to ascertain exactly who is the owner of the parcel. Now, the next step is that there is a preparation of the systematic adjudication application. So all of the information has now been obtained, and the application is made right there in the field in accordance with the provisions of the SPA, the Act. The next step is that there is going to be a display of the adjudication record. This is now all of the information that has been gleaned from the interviews that have been done. So therefore, you will see on that listing the persons who are claiming to be the owners, the basis on which they are making their claim, their names and addresses, and the map is also there. So you know exactly what parcel of land they're claiming ownership for and what it is that they are saying. Now what is the purpose of doing this? It is to give notice to everyone that, yes, these persons are making a claim for the land. And of course, if you have an objection to that claim, you are allowed to make that objection, yes? Now, once that process is completed, the next step is that the adjudication certificate is issued, yes? Now, what does, what is the benefit of the systematic land registration? It means that the service is brought to the landowner's doorstep. It is no longer a situation where you have to go somewhere to get things done and sent home because you don't have all of the information. Yes, the service is brought to the landowner's doorstep. And what does it mean for us as a country? It means therefore that we can register a much more appreciable amount of land in a much shorter period of time. Now, at the end of it all, of the process, guess what happens? A certificate of title is issued in the name of the landowner. A certificate of title is issued in the name of the landowner. And see, we have some landowners here who have gotten their certificates of titles handed to them by none other than the Prime Minister, yes? And there we have Ms Walcott also handing out certificates, a certificate of title. Now, what are some of the benefits of having a certificate of title? Another picture? The benefits of having a certificate of title. One is that here you have a document which shows exactly who is the owner of that parcel of land, yes? The registered title is state guaranteed, which really means that if you have suffered some loss as a result of something that was done, a mistake or that was made or an omission by the registrar of titles, you can seek compensation, yes, through the Assurance Fund. And disputes regarding the ownership or rights over the land will be resolved much more easily than they would have been before. Okay, now, this systematic adjudication system really just started in 2021 and the focus thus far has been on, in three parishes, St Elizabeth, Manchester and St Catherine. The pilot project, as we call it, will end March 31st, uh, 2024, by which time we anticipate, we hope, our target was 20,000 titles issued. We have so far done 11,000 and we are sure, we are working assiduously to ensure that we deliver the 20,000 titles, yes? Thereafter, we will move on to other areas. The idea is that we will move throughout the country and of course focusing on those areas where you have the greatest levels of unregistered parcels, yes? Alright, so now we have our certificate of title. We need to find information about land in Jamaica. What, where do we do that? It is 10 o'clock at night, we need to find out some information. What can we do? Is there some service that allows us to do that? Yes, there is a service called E-Land Jamaica, again, from the National Land Agency. And what does E-Land allow you to do? If you want to conduct searches to obtain information on your own land or on any other parcel of land, you can use this online service. It allows access to Jamaica's land information at your convenience. And so you can get cadastral maps, you can look at caveats to see if anybody has, um, put anything on your land, deposited plans, enclosure plans, registered titles and all of that information. Alright, so we are going to move on now and talk a little bit about divestment of government lands. Yes, there are lands owned by the government in the, um, that the Commission of Lands is responsible for. And yes, those lands are sometimes divested either by sale or by lease. If there is anyone who has an interest in either leasing or purchasing government lands, then they make an application to the Commissioner stating the property, the area, the purpose for the acquisition. The Commissioner will then do the necessary due diligence to determine whether or not the land is available and whether or not it is really available for the purpose. Once that determination is made and let us say the land is available, then an application, evaluation is undertaken by the Commissioner of Land Valuations. The property is advertised and thereafter, the application is submitted to the Land Divestment Advisory Committee who reviews it, makes a recommendation to the Minister, who will then make, decide whether or not the land is to... I mentioned Emil, um, sorry, Enrock earlier. And here is where we assist because the acquisition of land on behalf of the National Works Agency as well as Enrock. Enrock is now doing Highway 2000, which is the southern coastal highway portion from Williams Field. There's the Montego Bay Pyramid Road and we have the Southern Coastal Highway Improvement Project being done by the National Land Age, um, National Works Agency. The Montego Bay Pyramid Road has three sections, the bypass, the Long Hill Bypass, the Montego Bay Bypass, the Long Hill Bypass, the West Green Avenue and Barnett Road Rehabilitation. So once you have all of the lands, you will have a wonderful road over which you can drive in Montego Bay without all of the necessary congestion. And you will know that the National Land Agency played a part in ensuring that that is done. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you Mrs Born. Brilliant note to end on. If we could go back to the slide before with your hometown and how it will look where the Montego Bay Bypass Pyramid Road will be, courtesy of the National Land Agency, ensuring that we have the land acquisition to ensure greater connectivity and roads for people. Mrs Born, thank you so much once again. We really appreciate it. Very important information. Let me tell you what I think. You really wanna know how you can get your grandmother's parcel of land where your parcel from generation to generation being registered in your name, am I correct? That's what land agencies are going to tell you. They do have a booth around the back as well, but when the Prime Minister comes to, I want you to explain to some of those issues that you face in terms of land. If you're not talking to us, we can't know how to help. And the Prime Minister is committed to ensuring that we build a better and stronger Jamaica. Ladies and gentlemen, we have another presentation. The Housing Agency of Jamaica is coming up next and they have a very interesting presentation as well on their work, the impact that they have on lives and certainly the plans they have for you here in Western Jamaica. Mr Rein Pendergrass, please give her a round of applause.
The most honourable Prime Minister, honourable Ministers, Costas Rotalorum of St James, the honourable Conrad Pitkinen, and he's a member of the House, of the Board of Directors of the Housing Agency of Jamaica, Chairman of the Board of Directors. And I want to single out my Chairman, Mr Norman Brown. He's a Montigonian, he's in the house. And Heads of Agencies, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, my Permanent Secretary, Mrs Arlene Williams, she's also here. Just to start off by talking a little about the vision of the Housing Agency of Jamaica. And the Housing Agency of Jamaica sees itself as a market leader in providing affordable housing solutions, innovative and environmentally friendly solutions and services. How the Housing Agency operates? It operates as a land and housing development company that provides shelter solutions for all Jamaicans. And it is a self-financing entity, a lot of persons do not know this, that is wholly owned by the Government of Jamaica and its parent ministry is the Ministry of Economic Growth and Job Creation. And of course, its core service pertains to providing housing on the open market, whether it be housing units or land parcels and the upgrading of informal settlements. And of course, we rely on grant funding as well. For example, we have a partnership with the Tourism Enhancement Fund. Some, let me point you to some of our major achievements. We, we have provided, over the years, the Housing Agency has provided between approximately, from 1960, about 50,000 solutions to the present. And since 2012 to the present, 8,701 solutions in nine different parishes. And it has issued over 10,000 titles. Currently, from 2016 to 2023, we have issued 2,713 solutions. And we have a map, I think the presentation has run ahead of the, the map. But we have a map and the map shows that the largest footprint of solutions reside in Montego Bay, where we have built approximately 3,316 units since 2012. And if you were to look at their western parishes on a whole, we would have built over 5,391 solutions. And this includes St James, Trelawney, St Anne, Westmoreland and St Elizabeth. Now, in terms of some of the other, some of the housing solutions that we have been doing in the west, we have been providing affordable housing in a place called Whitehall 3, where we have provided 155 studio units at a price of 4.2 to 8 million dollars. And, and 8 to 8 million dollars. And we have also provided 105 studio and two-bedroom solutions at Green Pond. We have done infrastructure work in Whitehall, where we provided 433 lots, in Ague, 180 lots, Belair 3, 763 lots, and Flankers 2B, 409 lots, Lily Put, 3732 lots. Now in terms of informal settlement upgrading, we, in terms of informal settlement upgrading, currently we are serving in 80 communities. And the work that we are doing, it is at different stages. The upgrading include the provision of services such as water and electricity and sewer services. And the whole intention is to build sustainable communities. So we have gone in and we are working in many of these communities. And many of you from across Montego Bay would know of Norwood, Retirement, Barrital, Flankers, Grinch Pen. These are some of the communities that we have worked in. And we have worked in also Lily Put as an agency. And the, in, a part of the intervention is to provide certificates of title to persons who need certificates of titles, certificates of title. The agency also provides a unique service in that it does a combination of, it offers a combination of solutions. It provides land, service lots and it provides housing units. Now, in terms of past developments, we would have done developments in St Elizabeth in Luana, where we did 70 studio units and 26 service lots. We would have done Phase 2, or in Luana as well, Phases 1 and 2. Phase 2, 196 slots. Green Pond, Green Pond 1, we would have done 105 studio units, as you would have learned. And at Whitehall 3 in Westmoreland, we built 155 studio units. Presently, we are undertaking the Edmund Ridge Estate. And this is a joint venture in St James. And it comprises a total of 744 units, over seven phases, with different mix of units, seven different types of units. So far, we have completed Phase 1. 2 comprises 100 units and we have done some onsite infrastructure and building works. Currently, we are working on getting the water and sewage finalized and that is expected to be completed by September. And currently, we are marketing Phase 3. We are also doing work, as I mentioned, in the Grinch Pen Brownfield, where we are regularizing 535 lots and this is likely to impact 1,900 beneficiaries. This is providing security of tenure. Security of tenure is vital for all persons to have because it assists them economically, socially and environmentally. And so we find that we have gone in and we have been putting in roads and we have been putting in water and electricity in the Grinch Pen Brownfield. Now for the future developments in the western part of, of region, we have three projects being planned. One, the oasis of Montego Bay, which is also at Green Pond, Grinch Pen Greenfield, and then there is Clarkstone in Trelawney. And these three projects are expected to yield about 2,071 solutions. We are also looking at purchasing parcels of land to put in our land banks that we can continue to do the work that we do best. And that is provide affordable housing solutions for all Jamaicans. In concluding, I wish to say that the Housing Agency's impact in the housing landscape has resulted in about, the Housing Agency is investing approximately $38 billion in housing across the island. And the whole intention and the impact we are seeking and what we are trying to affect is the way people live by building families, reducing crime, increasing employment, ensuring security of tenure and improving the way people live to so that there can be a transformation in the way they live. And of course, build sustainable communities. If you wish to contact us, you can go to our website, and you can get more information there. Thank you for listening.
Mrs Pendergrass, that is absolutely brilliant. Two things she said that resonated. The HAJ has done more in terms of its work in Western Jamaica than anywhere else. And secondly, that shortly, 2,000 more people will become homeowners courtesy of the work of the HAJ. Give her a round of applause, man, that's good. Acknowledge the presence of Senator Matthew Semouda as well as Senator Sinclair as well, who are here. And now ladies and gentlemen, everybody know the NHG. We're building Jamaica one community at a time, ensuring that you have houses and transform your lives and those of your families. So ladies and gentlemen, Mr Martin Miller, the Managing Director of the National Housing Trust.
Prime Minister Holness, Deputy Prime Minister, Ministers of Government, other political representatives, guests, my colleagues, Heads of Agencies, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Looking at the performance of National Housing Trust, we focused on what some may refer to as five years, the last five years, some may refer to it as six years. Between the period 2017 and 2023, which is March, we would have commenced 22,000 housing solutions. We processed 51,000 loans and our housing expenditure amounted to $248 billion. After, after numbers, the 51,000 solution, 12,700 had to do with Western Jamaica. By Western Jamaica, we are referring to this parish and the neighbouring parishes. St James in particular, we would have processed 6,400 solutions. There's a map that we have displayed on the screen which shows our involvement right across Jamaica. The projects that we are looking at in St James, and I know Minister Bartlett will be very, very happy about this one, Barrital, which we are going through under one of the special vehicle. We expect about 1,500 solutions and that is going through the approval process. We have identified the preferred contractor or developer and we expect that very soon we will see some activities there. What we are charged with is 43,000 housing starts. But we are here to promise Prime Minister that although we are running behind schedule, we have identified just a shade below 48,000. So we intend to do better. A quick breakdown of where, as, where we are as it relates to the 47,000 or 48,000 solution, as it is right now in terms of going through the contracting process, just over 6,000. as it is right now, in terms of going through the contracting process, just over six thousand. In terms of planning, twelve thousand eight hundred. Design, nine thousand eight hundred. Procurement, we are looking at eight thousand nine hundred. Construction, which mean that we, we are under construction now, nine thousand eight hundred. And that give us a total of approximately forty-eight thousand. When we look at what we need to do, first of all, we realize that the shortage in terms of housing is more at the end as it relates to our low-income earners. So, we have decided to engage two different programs. One, we refer to as the developers program, the other one we refer to as the guaranteed purchase program. Under the developers program, we invite persons who own land to develop housing solution within a certain price point. And we at N H D, we are committed to purchase all these solutions, as long as they fit within the price point and meet certain criteria. Under the guaranteed purchase program, the slight difference is that here, N H D, under the guaranteed purchase program, this is where you own land. Under the developers program, this is where N H D own land and we invite you to come with proposals. As it is right now, recently, you would have seen us in Sheffield, Westmoreland, that is under the guaranteed purchase program. We have an arrangement in Spot Valley, again, Minister Bartlett, there's some delay there and, and, and you know that we are working hard to have that one up and running quickly. Drive Valley in Trulani, excellent land, we expect to do some development there under the developers program. And as I've said before, Barrett Hall, under the developers program. The next picture, of course, shows like a groundbreaking. We have decided, based on where we are now, that over the next two years, we'll do a minimum of eighteen thousand starts. Again, looking back at western Jamaica in terms of what we're looking at now, approximately eight thousand starts within a very, very short timeframe. In Hanover, we are doing a resettlement that is at point. Saint James, I would have named those already. Trulani, the main one being Drive Valley, we are also looking at down there. And Westmoreland, there are various G P programs. In Saint Elizabeth, we also have some guaranteed purchase program. Now, we are looking at various ways that we can assist contributors and even non-contributors to own their own units. So, we focus on scheme development, we provide loans for persons who own land to do, to build on it. We also assist persons who would have purchased lots from N H D with construction financing. Those who own a property and maybe need to add a room for various reasons, we provide them with a home improvement. And of course, we identify some, a unit that is built by a private developer that is done through our open market. Now, our next slide will show where we have looked at various means of assisting those who are less fortunate. And that's where we would have introduced our brands and so forth. What you would see is, if you look at our housing expenditure over the years, is that majority, as far as seventy percent, seventy-five percent is spent on mortgage financing. We are shifting that. So, we are trying to focus the N H D funding on construction, because that's where we can influence the price point and the number of new solutions for low-income contributors. And that's the reason why you would have seen us introduce the much talk about external financing arrangement. But that we will deal with at another point when time allows. In terms of the external financing arrangement, what it does is to outsource the loan funding to private financial institution. I just want to make it very clear, and it has been said elsewhere, but I want to make it very clear, that the price that you obtain your loan at through those institution, the N H D portion will be at the rate as if you were to access the loan at N H D. If any contributor should go to a financial institution and for whatever reason is refuse a loan, go to the nearest, the closest N H D branch office, and your loan will be processed. Thank you very much, Naomi.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Again, if you could, just repeat it for emphasis, because it's been out there that, you know, again, if you go and you get the loan, you're not getting it at the N H D price. Repeat it for, for us, for emphasis.
No, no, it is even better than that. What we have done at N H D, if for any reason your loan is in a raise, so let's say, for example, a terminal here, at the N H D, we are not going to dispose of your property. So, what we have decided that we will purchase those loans, and we will treat them under our social program. So, you are not going to be any worse off. And if you are, then come to us. And of course, our boss is sitting there, so you know, you, you know the implication.
Thank you so much, Martin Miller, everyone. Again, you will not be worse off, particularly too, if you are found to have had an illness, trying to ensure that you pay your loan to the N H D. Critical. You know, the most far-reaching policy that has taken place through the N H D is what we call the intergenerational mortgage, that you, your mother, sibling could join together and purchase a home. Never before has it happened in Jamaica. And certainly, it's been a policy decision, the Prime Minister, of course, the Minister of Housing, that has led the team in terms of dealing with that. Ladies and gentlemen, there's a minister who's had so many accolades internationally. Your tourism product is an example for the world. But he's not only championed more tourists coming into Jamaica, he's ensured that we have tourism pension scheme, he's championed that for the workers. He's ensured that there is specific housing development for tourism workers. So, ladies and gentlemen, to talk to you a little bit more about the tourism workers and housing specifically within this western Jamaica through tourism, let's welcome the Minister of Tourism, the Honorable Edmund Bartlett.
Thank you, thank you so much, Naomi. This evening belongs to the most honorable Andrew Holness. And therefore, my five minutes with you will be extremely brief. Firstly, I want to thank our Prime Minister for the emphasis that he has placed on ensuring tourism housing development at a level unprecedented in the history of Jamaica. In the last five years, we're putting together some four thousand solutions for tourism workers across the western side of Jamaica, and particularly in the Montego Bay area. You heard a while ago, Edmund Ridge, eight hundred units. Uh, Grinch Pen, we have already completed infrastructure for five hundred and thirty-five families, nineteen hundred beneficiaries, and we bought three hundred and fifty-two acres of green field land for twelve hundred and fifty new houses to be built by the Housing Agency of Jamaica in that area. That was announced. Also announced is Barrett Hall, fifteen hundred new units there. And already, the Housing Trust is with, um, Wiccan in doing three thousand units in Estuary. Everybody remember Estuary? Of course, a number of you are here. And so, with Barrett Hall, with Grinch Pen, with Edmund Ridge, with Estuary, with Spot Valley, we will have the solutions, Prime Minister, thank you, sir, for the additional four thousand units of hotel space that will be brought into being over the next five to ten years. The Hard Rock, two thousand, you remember that? The expansion of a number of the hotels within the area. That is going to demand workers to come in from the areas. So, Prime Minister, solution one, tick the box, housing for the workers of tourism. The first Prime Minister of Jamaica to emphasize housing for tourism workers in Jamaica. Yesterday, Prime Minister, I got the report that now the first one billion dollars of savings in the pension plan has been realized by nine hundred thousand workers of the tourism industry. So, nine thousand workers are now members of the pension scheme, which is the first pension scheme in the world for workers of the tourism industry, done by Andrew Holness Administration. And thirdly, Prime Minister, your workers are being trained in an unprecedented way. And I'm to announce to you that the U N W T O, in their meeting in Riyadh, will be highlighted as the example of the country that has built human capital and has trained more workers than any other country in the region. Those are the three points I wanted to quickly make, Prime Minister, and to tell you thanks on behalf of the workers of the industry called tourism. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Minister Bartlett. Excellent and well done. So, the tourism workers, certainly, you have a minister who is ensuring that he advocates for your best interest. And of course, housing, a critical component of that. Ladies and gentlemen, the man who champions all of your issues in western Jamaica, he is the Deputy Prime Minister of Jamaica and the Minister of National Security. Give a rousing round of applause to Dr. Horace Chang.
Thank you, Naomi, and my colleague indicated this is the Prime Minister's night, but I have to, on behalf of the City of Montego Bay, welcome our Prime Minister to Saint James now. At the first town hall meeting, as we discuss the critical issues that affect our people, and have the Prime Minister directly in line of fire, so to speak. I spent two minutes just to explain the philosophy, philosophy behind the work of this Prime Minister in the area of housing and land. The history of, of Montego Bay reflects a town that, people not have access to land in an organized manner. Whatever you describe it, we end up at one said with twenty-one informal settlements, while the economy of the town expanded because there was no structured response to the need for housing for workers in the country. My colleague outlined here, tourism workers we didn't focus on, but housing in general and access to land is a philosophy of this Prime Minister, Andrew Holness. Comes from respect for people, because we seek to provide them with equity in society. When a man get a house, it means a whole different difference, if even from trying to rent place. When they have to go and become squatters, it's a disrespect to our people. And what we are doing as a country is to seek to avoid and prevent it. No longer can anyone my conscience be called squatters. We work to provide the titles, the infrastructure, and access. And we are providing on a dynamic way additional housing at cost that workers can afford. And I want to make a short comment on social housing, because that seeks, a government that seeks to provide housing for those at the lowest level of the socioeconomic level. There's always talk of why governments should, MPs and councillors need to give out zing sheet and some plywood to prevent leaking. It's the most disrespectful program. And I'm saying it publicly tonight, because many of my elected colleagues like to ask for it. The Andrew Holness government gives a social house that one can go in and live in. It's a concrete and steel house. And it gives him dignity, equity, and respect. And that reflects the mood and philosophy Andrew Holness as Prime Minister is respect for every single Jamaican, who we ought to have equity in the society, and will use the money so to do. When you talk about zing sheet and plywood, next board, next, next rain come, it'll start leak again. And you have to go back and beg for anything. When you give him a house, the man is free. He's an individual equity, he can stand on his own two feet, look at other issues, and become the true Jamaican spirit that we are, that he is. So, my friends, this evening is long spent. We are going to invite the Prime Minister, although he's due to talk, I think all of you are here to hear him. It's a great pleasure to have him in Montego Bay anytime, and we cannot show the Prime Minister, you are welcome here. We want to hear you, and we'd hear your policy on housing and land. The most enlightened policy of any government in the history of Jamaica. Welcome, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Doctor, the honorable, the honorable Dr. Horace Chang for your presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, the Prime Minister say he has to talk to his people, the people of Jamaica, by seven thirty. Well, see, they're right on time, seven thirty. Ladies and gentlemen, the Prime Minister has done so many things in terms of housing. He's taken on the mantle by himself, along with the team in government. Intergenerational mortgages, the Prime Minister. The new social housing program, the Prime Minister has ensured that those most in need are the ones who get it. And you know, every time he goes out and we do the social housing program, he makes a point to say that the systems and processes in place, one helps to transform lives, but importantly and critically, you don't hear one iota of any issue concerning corruption in it. Very, very important. He leads from the front, and he leads to ensure that Jamaica is transformed into the vision he has. So, ladies and gentlemen, please stand and give a rousing round of applause to the Prime Minister of Jamaica, the most honorable Andrew Holness.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much. You know, this is, I could, I could say this is my hometown. The friendly city. The beautiful city of Montego Bay. You know, it is often compared to a frontier city, that Montego Bay just has this kind of energy, this kind of entrepreneurial spirit that makes the feeling here such an alive one, that the people here, regardless of whatever is happening, the people of Montego Bay, the people of Saint James are very optimistic, very forward-looking. And you, you sense it in the energy here. Without question, Montego Bay is a growing city. You know, it is, it is, it is, you would call the, the ethic here pro-growth. The people here believe in utilizing opportunity. They believe in growth, they believe in business, and they believe in working for their own. As I drove in on the north-south highway and viewed the beautiful vistas around it, I reflected on how blessed we are as a country. We take it for granted sometimes, because there are many challenges here that distract us from the beauty around us. And sometimes, the challenges are such that they may overwhelm us, and we lose sight of the good around us, of the opportunities that are unveiling in front of us. So, in my presentation to you tonight, even though I'm talking to the always optimistic and positive-thinking people of Montego Bay and Saint James, but whenever I go before a mic, I'm talking to all Jamaicans, whether they are in Jamaica or overseas. And I'm saying to you, be optimistic. Be positive about your future. Bob Marley said in one of his poems, "The rainfall, body dirty tough." And somehow, it, it does feel like that. I was in the United States recently, and members of the DAS Pro were very happy to hear of our four point five percent unemployment rate. They, they thought that was fantastic. They thought that was fantastic. When we told them about the reduction in the national debt, they were blown away by that because their experience in different economies suggests that debt is moving in the wrong way in many other developed economies. When I pointed out to them that we moved from a high of almost 12% inflation just coming out of the pandemic to we're just about 6% and hopefully trending down towards our target, they were blown away by that because inflation is still a major threat. Inflation is a threat here, but it is greater in other jurisdictions. When we point out that, you know, we have had a loose count, what, seven budgets with no new taxes? But still, when you come back to Jamaica, the Jamaican outlook and feeling, not nag one. And it must not be dismissed. It must not be diminished in its profound value. We must pay attention to it because it is not that there is no acknowledgement that good things are happening. But we have to understand the eternal struggle of the people of Jamaica over these many decades. This promise of better must come. And all know that the people were at the base of the society. When they look up at me on the platform saying, "How glorious we are doing" and it has not yet translated into their household. Tonight, I speak to you. I know and I understand your frustration. Inasmuch as people are employed, we still have many people who are considered to be working but relatively poor. It is a reality of the Jamaican experience. But tonight, I want to engage you, those of you, my Jamaican brothers and sisters, my fathers and mothers, who for decades have seen the prospect of change in your circumstances. I ask you not to give up hope. Don't give up hope. Don't take a pessimistic and fatalistic view of the circumstances of the country. And why is it that I'm saying to you, don't give up hope? It is not because of what everybody feels that somehow there is election in the air. Everybody talking about elections all of a sudden. We are a democracy. When elections are due, they are due. But we must not postpone and defer and interrupt our progress for elections. Elections must be a routine. They must be very short, orderly and seamless. And then you get back to business. But there are those who want to use elections to disrupt progress. So let me just say to you, my mind is not on election. My mind is on ensuring that those who are at the base of the society who still have not yet felt the change that is happening, that you will get the chance because your government is not taking its eyes of managing your business and your affairs. In other words, there are those who are power mongers. They just want power. They don't necessarily believe in your progress. And the truth is that when they get power, they don't know what to do with it. So what they do is feed upon your frustration. That's what they do. They feed upon your frustration. And look here, there are many things to be frustrated about. Many things. But what you don't want to do is to disrupt the good governance that will make your life better. Now, let me put some things into perspective for you. Just after the pandemic, I used to get calls almost daily about the backlog of garbage collection. Almost daily. Radio talk shows bombarded. Why didn't we have garbage trucks? Why? You think the government just had the money there and didn't buy the garbage trucks? I want you to appreciate that from the time that you think about buying the garbage truck to the time that you get the garbage truck can be about 24 months. And those garbage trucks usually have a life of about five years. So by every, basically, five, seven-year cycles before, we didn't have enough garbage trucks. Why? I'm talking to the people who are very critical of government and processes and things that work in and complain a lot. Why? You know why? Let me tell you why. The government fiscal affairs, big word, but the management of your money, your taxes and other revenues that the government get, the management of the economy to create a growing and booming base of activity, the management of debt, all of those things place Jamaica in a position where we had to pay almost 70 cents out of every dollar for debt. So every dollar that Jamaica earn, sometimes as high as 70%. Today, you know where we are? It's, 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 the average was about 60%. But today, we are paying somewhere in the region of about 30 cents out of every dollar for debt. Now, I want you to follow me with this, with the garbage truck example. Follow me now. It's about every seven years you're going to have to refleet your garbage truck. So a properly run economy can budget for this because you know what your revenues are likely to be and you plan against that. So when you run your economy and it's stable, you don't have to every year come and put on tax, put on tax. We have kept the economy stable for the duration of this administration. Yes. And because the economy is stable, we can now plan. And because we're not paying 60 and 70 cents out of the dollar, we can properly budget. So before we got the garbage trucks, we had 1,896 backlog complaints between, I believe it's March and November. 1,896 backlog complaints. Now, the backlog complaints would be a metric, meaning a way to measure the efficiency and regularity of garbage collection. So if people are complaining, "Hey, my garbage isn't collected now for two weeks, for three weeks", that tells you that there is something wrong in the system. And usually what is wrong is that they don't have enough operable trucks or operational trucks to pick up the garbage. I'm just talking to you about practical things. So it took the government a few months in procuring the garbage trucks, putting aside the money to do it, going through the legal processes to make sure that, you know, there is no corruption and it's fairly transparent as to how the trucks are selected and that we get the best trucks. And then the trucks have to be built. They have to be constructed in a factory. And they came last year, 50 new garbage trucks. You know what the backlog is? The backlog complaint now is 873 complaints. So follow me now. Before the trucks came, the six or seven months before, the backlog complaints was 1,896 complaints. Since we have the trucks, about six months now, or probably more than six months, the backlog complaints have gone down to 873. Yes. In other words, we have cut those complaints by 1,023 complaints. So more persons are benefiting from a better system. But we still have 873 complaints about backlog. So we're not quite there. But is the glass half-full or is it half-empty? Hmm? Is it that the dirty tough, but the rainfall? It's a matter of perspective, how you look at it, the approach you take to it. But the facts tell you that you should have an optimistic view of it because the situation of poor garbage collection did not start with this administration. But this administration is the first administration in decades to be in a position to correct it and is moving to correct it. That is what is different about this administration. And the good news is that we have procured another 50 garbage trucks to come. So what that means now is that for the people who are still having problems with garbage collection, who will shout out loud, "See, my problem still exists, not nag one", we're coming to you. So if you, if, if, if by putting in 50 garbage trucks, we cut the backlog complaints by 1,023, when the 50 were come, we clear it off totally. This is what you call a pain point in the society. It frustrates the average person that you go out and you garbage the collect. You get upset. You, you, you know, what kind of country this? Yes, it's not good to see that and we understand that. But what I'm saying to you, my Jamaican people, my brothers and sisters, there is change happening before your very eyes. It is happening. And I'm giving you just one anecdote of it. But I could go with many others. The point is that what took decades to get to this point, the breakdown in our social system, the breakdown in our road maintenance, the breakdown in our financial management, is not going to happen like this with a snap overnight. But what you can be sure of is that this government has started the process of recovering Jamaica, recovering Jamaica stronger and recovering Jamaica better than it was before. So I use that as just one example to address this situation that we know, we understand, we sense the issue of having these great announcements about the fundamental changes in our economy and structure and how that translates to the young lady who stopped me on my way in to tell me that I don't want to talk her business. People would see me talking to her, but I'm sure she would mind me saying it. To tell me that she has two kids, she has bought bags for them, but they need shoes. And I'm sure that's right around Jamaica, that there are many families like that that continue to need help and of course, we're going to try and help. But what is not often spoken about is that there are many families who are now able to send their children to school without any form of assistance. There are many, many families who are doing better. You're not going to hear that being broadcast. But remember, the unemployment rate is not a fiction. It's, it's not a fiction. It is, it is a very good measure that we have been using for decades. And we know it is an accurate measure because people who are here, who are business people, will tell you that they simply cannot find people to employ. They, they, they will tell you that all the time. But yet there are people who are saying, "I'm looking for a job and I can't find a job". And that is a challenge that we have in the society, which I want to spend a few minutes on. Even though we have this very low unemployment rate, Jamaica still has a significant number of great potential human resource outside of the labor force. Many of them are on the street corners, boring a hole in their hand middle. Some of them are drawn into crime and other deviant behavior. And some of them just choose to stay at home. We need you in the labor force, in the workforce in order to ensure that our economy can continue to grow. In fact, this is probably the first time in maybe four or five decades that the availability of labor could be a constraint on our growth. Meaning that if businesses who want to expand can't find the labor force to do it, it will impact on their investment decisions. So right now, your government recognizing this, we have appointed a Minister of Skill whose job it is, through the Heart Trust NSDA, to find those youngsters, particularly those youngsters who left school, they have some training, but they just don't want to come into the labor force for whatever reason, to bring them into the labor force, to train them with skills that are aligned to the job opportunities and get them into the labor force. We want to get them employed, but we also need them in the labor force because that is what is going to expand the growth of the economy. So we are working on that as we speak. So we are at this position where we could potentially solve the crime problem by bringing in those youngsters who are the recruit for gangs and cut off the supply to criminal activity. those youngsters who are the recruit for gangs and cut off the supply to criminal activity. Yes, that is one of the strategies, and this government is working towards that. But as you drive on the north-south highway and you see the beautiful views, and by the time you come out, you come off that highway at the roundabout, you end up in traffic. Traffic congestion. That's a source of frustration. That's a pain point in the society. And it's not just for the driving public, it's for the general commuting public. Because the time you spend in traffic is non-productive, very inefficient. If you think about the gas you waste, wear and tear on your vehicle, the discomfort and the loss of your leisure time and the loss of your work time. It's very unproductive. You see, my, this is a youngster, he knows it, you see. And as we head back to school, traffic is going to become a pressure point. A pain point for the society. Your government recognizes this. And speaking now of that north-south corridor, we are going to improve that corridor, widen it, put in proper ingress and egress, meaning develop the entry and exit off of that north-south corridor, Runaway Bay, Discovery Bay, that area. And we're also going to extend the north-south toll road into the interior. So that north-south toll road will extend, coming almost to the border of Trelawney. So you will now be able, not just to drive from Kingston to Orchardus, but now you'll be able to drive from Kingston, if you want to go into Orchardus, you come off of that exit, and then you continue straight around for another about thirty kilometres, and you end up close to the border of Trelawney and Centaur. So that work is now being undertaken. So that, that area where you have this massive traffic jam sometimes between the highway and Runaway Bay, between when you exit the, the, the toll road, the north-south toll road, that corridor, that stretch. I, I, I'm trying to find it, because there's so many names for it. Prairie is one part of it, but then you have CLM and then you have... But that corridor, that entire corridor, has to be improved. And we already have plans for that in addition to building, the extending the north-south highway. So your government is thinking about these things in a futuristic way, right? In the same way that we have actually started work now for the perimeter road in Montego Bay. Now, the people who are experiencing traffic, when they are in the, in the, in their cars or in the bus, and they can't move, they're going to cuss the government. They're going to cuss the government. So it's important that after they cuss the government and they calm down, they should be aware that the government can't build the road in one day, not even a year. From the time of thinking about the road to the time of building the road can be as long as five years. Yes, it can be that long. We are trying to move very quickly, but it is just what it is. So I want you to know that your pain points today, the pressures you face today are being seriously addressed by your government. It is just that you can't see the fruition of the effort because it takes time. Now you have to decide as the electorate, now you have the power to decide, right? Do you want a government that will strategically, robustly, and intelligently address your issues? Or will you deal with a government that is going to come and promise you short-term fixes that won't work? It's up, it's up to you. My job is to make sure that I serve you as best as I can with the best of my ability and the sincerity of my heart to ensure that when these solutions come, they will be there for generations, decades. So I come from a, a generation that's not power hungry. I am not in it for power. And I've already declared that. I am in it to make sure that Jamaica is better off. And it confounds people because even within my government, there are those who want us to take short-term decisions because they are nervous about how people are going to vote. Yeah, well, you know, if you have power, you don't do anything with it, it's a waste. If you don't improve people's lives, it's a waste. And I, I think by any measure, by any measure, no matter what measure you want to use, this administration has improved the lives of the Jamaican people in meaningful ways. It's a major challenge. Jamaica is the land of wood and water. And you know, there is a saying that the water that you have now is the water that the dinosaurs drank. Meaning that water is always here. The challenge we have is how to make the water portable, meaning drinkable, healthy-wise for you, and how to move the water from where it is to where you live. So those are the two problems. So one is, we call it the production of water, and the other one is the distribution of water. To do that requires massive investments in infrastructure. So I know, I get the complaints all the time. People saying, I have, my community has been there for fifty years and I never have water. Never, not a pipe run up here. No, 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 I mean, I, I went to a community called Rosewell in Clarendon. Lovely community. It was, it was once the capital of the parish of Clarendon, my, my recollection. And they had a, a big tank there, but it wasn't operational and there was no water. And I went there and I heard your complaints and I made sure that when I became Prime Minister in 2016, I fulfilled my commitment and they now have water. But I wanted to, to just walk with me a little bit on this water problem. Just hold my hands and walk down the road with me on this water problem. In New York, a water main broke and it flooded, I think it's Times Square. You know how old that water main was? About a hundred and ten or something like that years old. The point I'm making to you is that Jamaica's water infrastructure was mostly laid in the fifties and sixties, some in the seventies, and incrementally. Much of it is old and creaking. Rather, old and leaking. Yes, my dear, asbestos pipes were used during that time as well. And especially for this parish, the Minister Matthew Samouda, who handles that portfolio for me, is here, so he can give you his sees of the, the details. But we are planning, so I'm saying this now for the people of St. James who have been complaining, we get the complaints, Minister Bartlett, let me tell you, you have some very good MPs, your, your, your Member of Parliament, Minister Malahu Fort, you know, Homer. Complaints, but if you think you complain, you hear the MPs and the ministers. It's just that they don't complain in public. But they complain to me, you see Minister Malahu Fort laughing, she know why she laughing, you know, because she's one of the main complainers. So they, they do come and represent vigorously. And they have been bringing to us the situation in Montego Bay where the main pipelines have collapsed, and so you don't have in some of the communities a reliable water supply. So we have decided that we're gonna find two hundred and nine million US dollars to develop a program. Let me give you the right name of that program. Minister Samouda, you, you sent me the notes. It is the North Western Parishes Reliability and Service Improvement Pro- Project. And that will involve, I believe in the first instance, using technology to repair some of the pipes. We're going to replace some of the pipes and we're going to improve the water supply, the production of water, those, those plants, which would include, let me just give you a few of them. We're gonna do the Martha Bray and Great River Water Treatment Plant Expansion. We're going to do water transmission main replacement, then the grill pipeline replacement from Russies to Orange Bay Logwood and Grill. The Montego Bay Pipeline Replacement from Martha Bray Water Treatment Plant to the Terminal Storage Tank. We're going to do the Falmouth Water Supply Refurbishment and Renewal. We're gonna do the Savanna Mar Water Supply Refurbishment and Renewal. And we're gonna do three small portable water treatment plants, Cambridge in St. James, Two Meetings in Manchester, and Moravia in Manchester. And of course, there are more details, which Minister Samouda will give you. But I just wanted to say to the people of these North Western Parishes who may be saying, no, no, go on for water and another pain point. We hear, we appreciate it, we take the cussing, we understand. But we are using the economic benefit, the stability and growth of the economy to convert that into meaningful benefits for you. This is the first time in a long time that any government will be able to take on these massive capital expenditure without necessarily borrowing to do so. Now, if that is not a change in, in our circumstances as a people, then I don't know what is, what you have to watch out for. And always be vigilant, which is why your cussing is important, to keep the government on its toes, that the government doesn't become complacent and take you for granted. That they must always feel nervous on their toes and come to Cabinet and make up knives on your behalf. So that we can move quickly. But the speed of the, the conversion of the economic dividends into benefits for the people at the base of the society, who make up the foundation of the society, is not only dependent on politicians. Yes, politicians make the policy and they make the promises. But there is a thing called the public bureaucracy. Yes. And where we are in Jamaica with our public bureaucracy is that the change in the economic progress of the society means that we need a different attitude of the public bureaucracy towards growth and development. There needs to be a different mindset change. So we have looked at the public sector. I have done some changes with a strategic view of improving the high-level efficiency to make sure that things like approvals and permits happen quickly, that government decisions that impact upon private sector decision move quickly. Because some people might look at that and say, oh, it's a private sector-friendly government. They're not business about poor people. That is the greatest nonsense. Because if you want to treat with poverty, the best way to deal with that is to get people employed. Anybody who come to tell you about welfare want to keep you dependent. People who come to you and say, look, I want you to get educated, I want you to get a job, and from that, we're going to build houses that you can get. We're going to create a safe and growing society. That's what you want. So the public bureaucracy, the public administration, from the permanent secretary down to the secretary in the civil service and in the public service has a role to play in the efficient and fast delivery of service to the people of Jamaica, because that is a pain point of the people. In as much as I get complaints about water, about roads, I also get complaints about government service. I, I don't want call no agency. I don't go do that. But you know, there's a story told, not a story, it's true. That somebody goes somewhere to get a particular document that they need, important document. And when they went there, it was a long line and no service, and all the people here was cussing me. Poor me, I, I do have nothing to do with the actual delivery of the service, but, but ultimately, government is responsible. Government is responsible, and I personify the government. So of course, the person who relayed the story to me told me that she take them on. Yes, so the, the, this, the public service is also a pain point to citizens. Whether it is you go to pay taxes, you go to get your passport, you have to deal with customs, you have to get police records, whatever it is. The, the speed of delivery of service to the citizens is a challenge. And I, wh- wh- whether it is, wherever it is, it's just a general problem across this society. Now, there are some things that the government can do to make, I hear you talk about tax office. Ah, good, ah, you hear that? A, a promotion for the Montego Bay Tax Office, they work good down there. Love that. So there are some things that the government can do to improve efficiency, and we are working on those. One of them is the NITS, the National Identification System. So instead of every time you go to deal with government, you have to fill out form, give your name five times, sign how many different documents. One document identifies you all across Jamaica. So that is almost ready for full rollout. But we have started to invest in training the public sector, especially high-level leadership. We have given out the Marcus Garvey Scholarships, where we are sending our high-level technocrats and bureaucrats to the best universities in the world so that they can understand and see how efficient business management can be applied to public sector circumstances. And that will result in tremendous benefits for the citizens of the country. Because the change in the efficiency and quality of service starts when the manager of the service unit says to the customer service agent, "Listen, when you go out at that desk, no matter what happened at your yard, you must put on a smile and treat every citizen that come to you with respect and urgency." That is really where it starts. And so that is the level at which we are making the first investments. Of course, and then there is the issue of the compensation. Now, this is a sore issue all over. And I'm certain if I did a poll in this room, the majority would believe that, yeah, alright, some people deserve it, but most of them don't deserve it. And then if you said about politicians, maybe 90% of the room would say, "No, politicians shouldn't get their increased pay." And it is a reality that this government has to address. We can't just leave it hanging in the minds of the public. We can't just leave it there. Some people feel that, "Why, Prime Minister, don't bother talking about it, just let it die." It's an issue that will never die. People will always hold that in their minds and some will hold it in their hearts. Because, you know, our society still has a great mistrust for politicians. And, you know, I can't ignore that. As a politician myself, I have to accept that the area in which I serve, this is one of the jeopardy's that you face. Because, let's face it, you know, after decades of promises of better, the truth is that, you know, Jamaica could have been so much more than we currently are. It's just the reality. So how do we become the best that we ought to have been? And how do I carry the people along the pathway of being the best that you can be? And I tell you, it's a most difficult challenge because some of the perspectives held are entrenched. And some of them, I believe, are unreasonably entrenched, but emotionally entrenched, meaning that before you can change their heart, you may have to change the minds of the people. And you can only change the mind with information and you change the heart with love and patience. So on this matter, I have to take the blame, take the cussing, be patient. But at every opportunity, explain and give information. So if the public sector is such an important variable in us achieving growth, and one of their main concerns is the level of their compensation, then the government has to, at the same time we are asking for better service, we also have to address the issue of their compensation. And we took a decision that we would, from the economic benefits that have accrued from better economic management, pay the public sector more. That wage bill would go up by about 112 billion dollars. So a lot of people, like the garbage complaints, which were at 1,896, now cut to 800. A lot of people have been positively impacted by the compensation change. A lot of people. But they're not going to say. Those who still have challenges, they must keep raising their voices so that nobody forgets them and so that their challenges can be addressed. And I know that there are still some issues out there that need to be resolved. And I'm saying to you, this is not a closed matter. We are still working with the relevant agencies that have concerns, those who have not yet been addressed, to make sure that they are addressed, that there are no anomalies or distortions remaining. And that's the commitment of the government. So yes, I understand the complaints. But I'm saying to you, yes, I'm asking for patience and I'm asking for understanding. And I'm saying to you, keep a positive outlook. These matters are going to be addressed. As it relates to the pay of politicians, when it happened, when we decided to go with the increases, I mean, even rational people were calling me to say, "Prime Minister, why you never appoint a committee to do it?" And no matter how I tried to explain, it just wouldn't go through. Because, again, not only the mind was blocked, the heart was blocked by it. You know, people were really upset. But you know, maybe now persons would listen. Because when we appointed the committee to review the salaries, we hired a consultant that went through the entire public service, everybody who was paid by government, and put in place a systematic, logical public sector compensation program. The most comprehensive that has ever been done in the history of Jamaica. Most, without question. Every job was categorized in its compensable elements, meaning the elements that could be compared across jobs and their comparison. They were all benchmarked to private sector rates. And then the increases applied, including the jobs of the elected officials, the political executive and parliament and councillors. No specially-appointed committee could do that. So if you're asking about a specially-appointed committee that is objective, then that is what was done. Then if you're saying, "How do we hierarchically", meaning, "How do you pay persons according to their rank and position?" That is one of it, of course. And 100% agree with you. Because I've come into that point next. You need an objective review to see which job has the greatest responsibility, the greatest risks, demand the greatest output. And you try to match that with compensation. So I think that the process that was used to determine the pay of the elected officials was a very objective process. So the question is asked, well, the extent of what was paid to the elected officials versus what everybody else got was that fear. Now, that's a legitimate question. It's a just question to ask. And my answer, outside of the present circumstances, would be that politicians should not be paid disproportionately greater than anyone else. That's my honest and genuine belief. But why did it happen? Why were politicians, I'm using the word politicians, but why were elected officials, the ministers, the parliamentarians and the councillors, why were they paid disproportionately to everyone else in some categories? Well, first of all, because administrations, knowing the sensitivities of this pay issue, did not want to take the political risk to keep the elected officials' pay in step with inflation and with the adjustments in salaries. So the last time that politicians got a salary adjustment was in 2002. People forget the history, that when the PJ Patterson administration announced the 102% pay increase, I was just a newbie in parliament. There was uproar and turmoil in the society. And he appointed the Oliver Clark Committee to review it. And then the Oliver Clark Committee gave a report to parliament. Hold on. And then, you know what they did after that? They appointed a committee headed by Omar Davies to review the review. By 2003, the second part of the increase had to be scrapped. You know why? Because the government then had to impose a wage freeze. So they didn't get the full increase, the full adjustment. So now, we have put in place a system that will bring their pay to the correct level that they should be, which is just a huge jump. But going forward, Jamaica will never have this problem again if we keep the economy stable, we keep inflation manageable and predictable. And so salaries would only be adjusting by an inflation factor and by one important factor, which never comes up in any discussion, productivity. The gentleman there said, "We must pay them by their work." That is where we're heading to. So we have solved this long problem. We take the political hit for it. But Jamaica going forward will be, it is to politicians or public sector workers, we must know as taxpayers, demand increased productivity. I notice the clap not so strong because productivity is not necessarily a word that we believe in. No, I'm being, you know, tonight, tonight, I'm, I just feel like talk. Tell me when you're ready for me to stop talk. I think I gone, I gone a little while, I better stop. I better stop. So productivity is a word now. So we're gonna have a little more debate about compensation. But the next phase of your government's strategic redevelopment of the country is about what we call performance-based compensation, performance systems, performance accountability towards improving productivity. We must get more out of every hour of work in the day. There is, and I know it's going to set off all kind of alarm and quarrel and all kind of things in the society, but you know me, I don't walk off a duck's back. We have sometimes a view that asking for more work, right, is almost like servitude. We tend to want to confuse service with servitude. I think our, as a people, our mentality with this growing economy has to change now to keep that energy in the economy, that we're going to give more effort. Because we have now put in place a system that more effort is going to result in more pay. I notice nobody clap because nobody believe it. It's true, people don't believe it. But if the society is going to maintain what we have started and move to another level, then our system of reward must be one that is compatible with greater incentive and greater reward for greater work. There are those who prefer the old system, you know, where effort is not measured. So think about it. If you work in an office and the man who come in, sit down at the desk, go on him phone, go on TikTok, phone a ring him down site, file on him desk, he don't do not about it. And the lady beside him, as the phone rings, she take it up, the files come in, she sign them off, and she don't even take calls. But at the end of the day, them get the same pay. What kind of system is that? So we are, these are the big things that your government is taking on, you know. You don't hear nobody else talk about these things. But these are the things that are going to transform your society. Lazy people no like hear about that, you know. Lazy people no like that. But I want to see my country grow. And an important part of growth and critical variable in growth is productivity. So we have expanded the labor force, but the growth is still just inching up. So with the labor force we have, we are going to pay more and expect more output. That is the transformation of the Jamaican society. Now, when your society reaches that level where your workforce is productive, you don't have to give incentives for people to come. In other words, people come to Jamaica, it is here, sun, sea, san, right? Now, we want to transform the tourism product. We're going to make it, going to add a few more S's to it, right? Sun, sea, san. Service. Right? Seamlessness. Safety. Yeah. Yes, now can you imagine if you transform your product like that? You increase the safety, you increase the service and the seamlessness, meaning that the tourists can maneuver and articulate, move around in your town. So instead of staying in the hotel, can you imagine them going to the Charles Garden Market? Without any worries? That's the kind of society you want to build, right? We transform our tourism. And this is the labor force now that we are trying to transform. Jamaicans are not afraid of hard work, you know. When they go overseas, them work hard because they see the reward. And what we need to do is make sure that they are confident that their hard work here will be rewarded. And if we transform our labor force here from being what it is now, to being a high-skilled labor force that is highly productive. being a high-skilled labour force that is highly productive, people will move their business to come to Jamaica. They don't need no tax break, they don't need no import duty reduction, not like that, they will come just for the labour force. We have that already, you know. People come here for the creativity of our creatives, our musicians and so forth. They come to get our lyrics and get our vibes, and then they go back and make big song of it and make a lot of money. But we can have that in all sectors of our economy, if we transform the labour force. So I went into this kind of esoteric discussion, this kind of high-level discussion, to say to you that, yes, the pain points that you are experiencing are not ignored by the government, even though we are addressing these high-level things like transforming the labour force, bringing down unemployment, transforming the public sector. Because the only way to change the pain points that you have, that you experience, is for us to do these things that I have just mentioned. So if you want improved service from the government, wherever you go, whether it is tax office, passport office, wherever you go, then we have to change and transform the public service into a service-oriented, highly productive entity. So I hope you see the connection between the improvement in the pain that you experience on a daily basis and the policies that the government has to put in place. You elect government to make these big, high-level decisions that are going to make your life better. The project that we are on is to improve the quality of your life today, but to also make sure that we improve the quality of life for your children. What is progress? Progress is when your children do better than you. That is progress. So my friends, the dirty tough, but rain or fall. God bless you and thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Prime Minister, the most honourable Andrew Holness. You know, ladies and gentlemen, the Prime Minister saying, it's interesting. Thank you so much, everybody, and thank you for being such a wonderful audience. You see what the Prime Minister did? Don't get, don't, he used all the issues, did not duck from any issue in the entire society. Oh, go on now. He faced them, talked to you truthfully about them, what government is doing, but you know what happened? It really links back to the household. We're here to talk about land and housing, right? It really links back to the household and to how you are dealing with your household issues. And we're talking housing and land. The Prime Minister mentioned a couple of things that impact the household and impact really the ability to even purchase houses. It's now time for the Prime Minister to have a conversation with you, because we're here to hear from you. No, my, well, I'll take a few questions, Bill, just a few. So let me ask the Prime Minister, the most honourable Andrew Holness, to come on stage along with Dr. Horace Chang, the Honourable Dr. Horace Chang, and Minister Edmund Bartlett. So we're gonna take a few questions. And earlier, before we started, I gave some ground rules. Everybody was here, just say yes about the ground rules. Yeah, remember them, good. First thing, we're gonna have four mics in the audience. It's kind of late, so let's allot maybe 10 minutes first, and then we'll see how we go, all right, with time. So here's what's gonna happen. We have four mics in the audience, and I'll have one. The Prime Minister and the ministers here have microphones as well. I want you to raise your hand. Once you raise your hand, we're gonna get someone with a microphone to you. Now, remember, this is the critical part of it. We must be, we must be, yeah, man, we must be brief. So ask your question as briefly as possible. We want to get the answers to you. We have resource persons here that can help you as well. We have tents back there as well, from the agencies, that can give you practical information to change your life, all right? So I want you to raise your hand, identify yourself when you're given the microphone, tell us the area you're from, and quickly, succinctly, which equals briefly, ask your question. Ask enough people on this side. So let me start on this side. Do we have a microphone on my right side, your left side? Can we get a microphone to them? If not, I run to the audience. Do you have a microphone?
Right here.
All right, wonderful. So sir, could you identify yourself and your community?
I'm Chris Williams, from Granville, St James. Um, question is, if you're buying a new house, um, NHT finance it 100%, but if you're buying a other, a second house, um, you have to come up with, um, a sum amount of money, which a lot of time we don't have, because, um, like, for instance, if it's 10 million for the house, you have to pay like, I think, 5%?
Very valid question. Your question, if I may interpret it for you, is why is it that NHT homes, which are newly constructed, can get a benefit of a full mortgage, whereas houses that are purchased on the open market, um, second owner owned homes may not necessarily benefit? So I'm gonna ask, um, the managing director of the NHT to respond to you. But you have raised a policy issue about equity in the policy.
Okay. So, Prime Minister. Yes, so, Prime Minister, the NHT scheme units, the NHT scheme units, we give you 100% financing up to a maximum of $15 million. What we have done in recent time is to introduce a tier system. And by that, what I mean, there are times when we will provide you up to 15 million at the NHT rate, and then above that at the commercial rate. But the general rule is that we cap the expenditure as it relates to how much you spend on a unit.
So Martin, let me try and explain, because a very important question. So NHT houses, houses that are financed or built by the NHT, you're saying they will get 100% mortgage, providing that their house is $15 million?
Correct, correct.
So is that all houses that the NHT finances or builds gets that?
Next question, can we go on?
Well, let him just finish his.
Yeah, the thing is, it's a lot of people afford, can't afford the 5% that they're supposed to pay to get the house. So we would like it to be 100% financed, as long as we paying our NHT. I think that is just fair.
So I would say to you that what you have asked is not an unreasonable request. Bear in mind, however, that it is important that people who are seeking to own their own homes at least make a commitment in equity to the home. So you should start to save, to put down on the house. So that shouldn't be dismissed. The second thing I would say to you is, as the Minister of Housing, I recognize that there is a cohort in our society, young persons like yourself, who properly, you know, you've gotten a job, you have a steady stream of income, but you have not yet built up savings. You don't want to rent, and you want to acquire your home. So what the government has done is to shift the NHT's, almost its entire housing portfolio, into what we call affordable housing. And I don't want to say, Martin, what is the band of affordable housing? Anything from 10 to 15?
Yeah, we're trying to keep it within the region of 13 million.
Average. By the way, just to say that, we started out at eight as affordable, but after the pandemic and inflation, we are, we are at 13 as the target affordable housing. So I agree with you, sir. The strategy of the government is to keep the housing units and price at an affordable range, so that persons like yourself would be able to benefit. The tier or the cap at 15 is something that we may have to reconsider, so that houses that are slightly higher than that could benefit. So your point is well taken, and the policy consideration will be taken on.
All right, so we'll go on this side now, so the person who has the microphone this side, on that side with the mic, please, go ahead, yes. Can you get a, can you get a microphone, please? All right, hold on, we'll get to her, I see a whole heap of hands, you know. Uh, let me come to him with a microphone, all right? All right.
Most honourable Mr. Prime Minister, big up. My name come for you, so nothing, me come for biggie up. Besides Edmund Bartlett and Mr. Chang, pick up yourself.
All right, all right. Uh, those with the roving microphone, I have one down the back here, ladies and gentlemen. All right, so someone down the back here. So we're trying to spread it across the room to ensure that we get as many questions as possible. Ma'am with the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Honourable Prime Minister and your Holness. My name is Delphina Campbell. I'm from Cambridge, and I'm a worker of the Solid Waste Management. And I'm talking on behalf of all sweeper and sideman, everyone in the solid waste. Well, from March, we are working so hard. I'm there for six years, and many of them are longer than me. So what I'm asking you, sir, we supposed to go and staff, and until now, we haven't get any answer, what we still getting back contract? So I'd like to know what is going on with us, sir.
Thank you for that question. I am almost certain that I heard Minister Clarke in Parliament make some commitment on that, but we have the Minister of Local Government here, who was just waiting for such a question to get up and speak.
Thank you, Prime Minister. In response to the, in response to your question, all the entities within the Ministry of Local Government, in terms of staffing, is presently under review with the Ministry of Finance. The Ministry of Local Government has a substantial amount of contract workers, and we are regularizing all contract workers, so the discussions in terms of the compensation, everybody will be taken care of.
Right, so just to reinforce that point, it was announced in Parliament that the temporary and contract workers will be, um, be made permanent, yeah.
Thank you, Prime Minister, very important, the temporary workers will be made permanent. I have two senior citizens who really, Prime Minister, they've been here from about four, just for you. So sir, remember, we talk about keeping it brief, your time.
Good night, Prime Minister. It's a pleasure to be here to talk to you, because this is a question that I've been broaching with the local community. My name is Trevor Lewis, and I'm from Westmoreland. My problem is not really anything apart from a complaint with regards to Westmoreland Municipal Corporation. Last century, I applied for the purchase of a property that my family have been living on now for nearly 100 years. It took nearly 11 years for the municipal corporation to come up with a sales agreement in 2007. I paid the full sum in 2007, and I'm still waiting for a land title. I have been to the parish council, I've been to the mayor, the CEO, I have written to the minister's, um, Permanent Secretary's Office, I have phoned the office several times, they've put me into different moods, I have written to your Auditor General on the matter of low performance, you mentioned it today, right? Lack of performance, and I'm still not given an answer as to why it's taking so long for this to happen.
My friend, once you have brought the question to me, I have to address it. Uh, and I'm giving you, uh, my commitment that it will be addressed. I don't know all the circumstances, just what you have said, but I'm certainly going to investigate it. So, um, we are gonna ask the Minister of Local Government to take your, well, someone from my office will take your details, and I'm going to ask the NLA, who is here, to look into the matter, to see if you have any jurisdiction. It's a titling matter, so obviously the NLA will have some jurisdiction, but we'll get it addressed.
Thank you so much, Prime Minister, for that, because, yes, for those who have issues, we have several support persons who will be able to take your information, so that we can ensure that we get the outcomes you need. I know lots of questions are here, I did say 10 minutes, we're gonna squeeze some more, all right, Prime Minister? Ministers, yes, ma'am, your time.
Okay, good night. My name is Desna Lightbody. I am from a quiet community in Melbourne on Crichton. We have been living there for over 50 years, and just the same question with this gentleman, um, have asked. Okay, they have asked us to do up our letters to tell. No, um, we, so, and. Sorry, we have done so three times, and it came back where they said there was a mistake in regard to the pricing, it was sent back for repricing, and this is like maybe over 20 years. I have called the National Land Agent, they said it's not their office, I've called Kingston.
Could you tell me which, could you tell me which entity you are buying the land from? It's a government entity?
It's a capture land, and everybody have gotten their title, and we are still battling for ours just the same. That's, um, in Crichton, where Melbourne Avenue and South Spring Road, I'm living on Crichton Heights.
Okay, so, so I'm wondering if the HAJ would have anything to do with that? So it's Ministry, it will be Ministry of Housing?
I've gone down there, we have spoken to, um, what's her name? I don't remember, she has retired now.
All right, well, we'll take your, we'll take your details, I saw, if it's, if it's not the NLA, doubt that, it's not a HAJ development, so it's Ministry of Housing.
Ministry of Housing, yes.
So we'll, we'll take a look at that for you.
Okay, thank you.
There's a lady who is walking around, there's a little red in her hair, that's also taking your information. Let's take a question from the back, there's one at the back. I want to make sure that we have a good spread. So I know I've seen hands, but I want to take as many as possible. There's a young lady with a microphone, yes, go ahead, please, I'm coming on that side next. Go ahead with the question, please.
Good night to our Prime Minister, good night to the other gentleman. Um, it's a question pertaining to NHT. I have applied for one of the housing, uh, Estory, when they started, and, um, NHT turned me down, they say I didn't have enough points.
I don't think they turned you down, I think you weren't, the appropriate term, Martin, is that you, you, you didn't meet the scoring, yes?
Well, they said not enough points, so at the time, I needed 118 points. Now, they called me back, it was, I think, in last year, and they told me that, um, there's a house there and all of that, and I get all my documents, and they still said I don't meet the requirement. So I want to know, for the Estory at the time, what would be the correct requirement, or what is the requirement to get an NHT house?
Martin, I think you might want to explain the point system and the selection process.
All right.
Keep it.
Okay. That is not working. Yes? Hear me?
You can use this one, Martin. All right, great.
Okay, so, points are awarded for a number of factors. One, based on your income, the lower your income, more points you receive. Points are also awarded based on the number of years you are contributing. Now, the longer you are contributing, the more points you receive. Estory was one of those developments that we received close to 14,000 application for, at that point, I believe we had advertised about 1,200 solutions. The fact that someone called you and asked you to bring in some documents. The fact that someone call you and asks you to bring in some documents, if you are able to go to the Montego Bay branch office, and I suspect there's a rep from Obe here and provide the information, we will be more than happy to look into your specific case and to be able to address your matter.
Thank you so much, Martin. Thank you so much to everybody here. We are at five minutes to nine o'clock. The day is well spent and let me thank also those who are streaming online. We have a lot of questions from our online people. Let's take a question on this left side. There's a microphone there, if you could, just, uh, give someone the microphone, yeah? There are several hands, so don't worry about it, ladies and gentlemen, we'll, we'll come to you. So let's get it again, make it as brief as possible. We're gonna take some questions as well from online. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Greetings to you all. How can, uh, my name is Cavell Dua from Rose Heights. Can I? How can a self-employed person be eligible to benefit from NHT or HAJ land or housing solution?
Martin, you may want to tell Cavell, that's your name, about the various programs that we have at the NHT. Um, uh, and then I will say a, a few words about the social housing and then I'll ask, uh, HAJ to respond.
Okay. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Right, so self-employed persons, just like any Jamaican who earn an income, you are expected to pay your contribution on your income. Now, depending on the number of years that you have been contributing, that again will decide we replace you in the queue as it relates to you applying for schemes. One of the things that we must understand is that scheme is just but one benefit that the National Housing just offer. You have a building on land, you can always go and identify a piece of land on the open market and purchase that. We have introduced what we refer to as a microfinancing, which is a facility to help you to purchase land at a very, very low interest rate. Go to any one of your credit union and ask about it. The beauty about this program, you don't even need to be a contributor when you approach the credit union. But having approached the credit union and accessed the funds, we expect you at that point to start contributing to NHT. The credit union will pass the information to NHT and one of our officers will then track you and encourage you to move from land to a complete unit.
Thank you, Martin. You know what I love about, uh, Montigonians and to the people on social media? They're asking some very important questions. There was one, Prime Minister and ministers concerning self-employed persons and homeownership. I believe we covered that already. Let's take a question here, I'm going over there. It's now nine o'clock, ladies and gentlemen. We're in Montego Bay, uno nice, you know. We're gonna take five more minutes in terms of question and answers. And there are people here who can take your issues and we'll deal with them after, all right? So let's do five more minutes. The person on this side and then I'll go over here to get a question answered. We have that? All right, let's go here.
Good night, my Prime Minister, Mr. Honourable Andrew Holness, Mr. Honourable Doctor Horace Chang and the Honourable Edward Barclay. My name is Milton Campbell. I'm an author, I'm from Glendavon Endon. Sir, I wanna ask you a question, my Prime Minister. It's pertaining to housing. In 2015, there was a amendment, subjects on Article 3. There are some form of crime that is expungement. But I'm saying this, sir, if a person who commit. Unexpungement, correction, thank you. There's unexpungement. But if a person commit a crime that is unexpungement, how can that person get a job that can earn enough money that he or she would be able to purchase a house? And I think that every Jamaican need the opportunity to have a house.
I, I, I understand your question. It's a, it's a difficult question to answer, so I'm going to pass it on to, uh, Minister Malahu Ford, the Minister of Legal and Constitutional Reform.
Prime Minister, it's a tough question. We know that there are many people who have run afoul of the law and over time have turned around their lives. And we also know that we're suffering from a serious crime problem in the country. And employers want to know the history of the people they are employing. But for anyone who has committed an offense, that it is not on the list for expungement and you have really turned your life around, I would suggest that you apply for a pardon through the Office of the Governor General.
Thank you so much, Minister. Uh, well done. Let's go here, I've seen several hands.
No, but just before, uh, um, I don't want to leave you without hope. There is a route, as pointed out by, uh, Minister Malahu Ford. But the Minister of National Security is also here and he may wish to say what our considerations are, uh, in relation to this matter of expungements.
Thank you, Prime Minister. We are at one minute past nine, so we have.
Just very quickly to the gentleman who spoke, Milton, we know, there, there were some changes in the law in 2014, which affect a number of individuals with literally minor, minor prosecution and conviction in areas which are condescending. The law was changed to prevent expungement. In fact, I see the Minister of, speaking to Senator Sinclair, was brought to my attention. Uh, we can look at changing, re- reversing those activities. Um, as I said, they've been brought to my attention and I have a number of people genuinely in need of expungement. I, I, if you, I know the time is short, there's a very successful young lady, a teacher, who, um, at eleven, I've seen eleven of them, but as a teenager, she was caught in the mule business. She was taking a, a package of cocaine, and not cocaine, um, ganja. But the law, when the law was changed, she cannot get expunged. She is now returned to Jamaica, she paid her fine and she now a successful professional. And we'll have look at changing that aspect, but not all of them. The question, there's something would remain unexpungable.
Thank you so much.
So then the short answer is, it is something that the government is amenable to looking at in a positive way.
Prime Minister, ladies and gentlemen, this is exactly what conversations do, you know? It helps us to understand where the needs are, where your thoughts are, so that we can make meaningful changes to improve your lives. Let's talk to this lady here again. You know, we, we will make a hard stop at 9:05, but there are several resource persons here. Just let us know. I'm one, I'll write down your information and we'll get you the necessary assistance you need.
Good night, Mr. Prime Minister. I'm Tanya Burke and I'm from Harbour Street Craft Market. This question is about tourism. For everybody. What are you doing for the lower class people in tourism? Because we're not getting any benefits out of tourism. This is all about for the, for the, um, for the Indians. And tourism was made from my mother time come straight up to now. But we are not benefiting in no sort of way. The only thing we're getting is promises. Only promises. The last time Mr. Ed Bartlett came to the market, I think it's a couple of months ago. And he said they're gonna try to do what they can do and it's getting worse and worse and worse. And this is not working out for us. No business, zero business.
All right, thank you so much, Honourable Edmund Bartlett.
I think. Yeah, okay, so I think, um, it's, perhaps I know what she means, that she's not getting enough business. I, I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying. And, um, in all fairness, in all fairness, all I can say to you is that I personally will have the TPD team come to see that situation tomorrow. Because to say no business at all, in all fairness, is, is a little difficult one. If you say you're not getting enough business, I understand. And that I would easily and readily admit to because that is perhaps true. But no business at all and you're still there for all these years?
Thank you, Minister. So ladies and gentlemen, so, so hold on, hold on, remember, we have so many resource persons that we will get as many in as possible. Yes, Prime Minister?
We're, we're at the hard stop.
Yes, Prime Minister?
Fairness, so let's, let's, let's be practical on it. I do appreciate the point you're trying to make on it. And, um, and part of the issues, of course, is that we have to do, and let's, let's be very practical now because we have been working with you all on this issue of how to have more indigenous products in the market so that when people come to buy, they are getting made in Jamaica goods that will offer them a point of reference and conversation when they go back home. They don't want to be buying made in Japan and made in Taiwan and made elsewhere in Jamaica. They want to be getting made in Jamaica, so.
Yes, Prime Minister?
So, my dear, I, I have been to that market myself a couple of years ago. Haven't been there recently. I do, based upon what you have said, you have, you have piqued my interest to, to come and have a tour, to see exactly what is happening there. But it is not, your situation is not uncommon. I've, I've heard it before at other craft markets regarding the flow of customers through the market. Earlier in the presentation, I had said something to you about how we plan to transform our tourism from just being sun, sea and sand to add some other S's, which is safety and seamlessness. Those are two important things that we have to do, especially the seamlessness part. And what I'm about to say to you is not going to bring immediate relief to your problem. That is a, a, a thing that the Ministry of Tourism and the Tourism Development Product Company Limited has to do in terms of how they direct tourists to your establishments. But the challenge is that the entire urban space of downtown Montego Bay needs to be redeveloped. It needs to be, I, I, I'm trying to find the, the right word. But in its present state, it is not going to carry the level of custom that you need in, in, in your establishment. So what we have done, we, we have started the, the planning for the redesign of some sections of Montego Bay. I am going to come and tour with you, I'm gonna ask Minister Davis to arrange that. And out of that could likely come another redesign, redevelopment plan for the area that you are. The entire downtown urban Montego Bay needs to be re- redef- redefined and a new development plan put in place for it.
Yes.
And, and that is, I think, the, the real solution to your problem. It has to be, you know, Montego Bay is a tourist town, but it is not designed for tourism. That's the, the sign. But if you want to get tourists out of the resort to be able to move around your town and coming to your craft market, aside from improving the product, which is what Minister Bartlett is saying, the products that you sell, it is also the convenience of their movement. There has to be sidewalk, you know, proper place for transportation to be able to take the bus and move around. That's what you want. Our concept of, you know, the, the, the tourist has to be, you know, locked up in a hotel can't be the concept that carries Jamaica forward, right? Which is what you are literally complaining about, right? So if tourists come here, we want them to enjoy what all Jamaicans can enjoy. So we need to improve the facilities for all Jamaicans. So, my dear, I hear what you're saying. I'm gonna hold Minister Bartlett to his commitment to get the Tourism Development Product Company Limited to have a specific attention to what your situation is. I am going to come on tour and we are going to do a total redevelopment plan for, for Montego Bay. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, I want to thank you. It's a, a hard stop, you have been a lovely audience. And, um, I would, I just want to say that it is always a pleasure for me personally to be in the friendly city of Montego Bay. God bless you and thank you.
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. Prime Minister, thank you so much. For those with more questions, Prime Minister, we have resource persons here who will be able to take your information, who will be able to ensure that we get you onto the agencies that are here and get you the desired assistance you need. Thank you so much, especially to, to the National Housing Trust, the Housing Agency of Jamaica and the National Land Agency. They have some booths at the back. Beyond that, we also have persons who are here, including myself, who can also get the requisite information to you. Land issues over 40 years come, titling issues, NLA is here. Housing issues, they are all here. I want, I want to put you right there. The, the managing director of the NHT, the head of the HAJ, the head of the NLA, Yemen. So we'll get you all. Fantastic, great, here they are, so on this side, we'll get everyone sorted. Yes, a land issue, so land issues go on this side for me. Ladies and gentlemen of Montego Bay, you've been a wonderful audience, thank you so much. The Prime Minister felt right at home. I think maybe he's gonna have to stay down here longer than we normally do in Kingston. Thank you, everyone. Please have a safe travel home. You've been a gracious audience. Good night and see you next time.
Hi, everyone. By now you would have heard the great news. Jamaica's unemployment rate is 4.5%. That's the lowest unemployment rate in the history of Jamaica. We are now close to full employment. As Minister of Economic Growth and Job Creation, this is the best news that our economy can have. It means that our economy continues to expand, but what it really means is that more Jamaicans have income. It means that more Jamaican families can do much better than they were doing before. We are building Jamaica.
Residents of St. James, let's continue the conversation on Building Jamaica. Join Prime Minister Andrew Holness for a town hall on housing and land on Thursday, August 31, starting at 6:00 PM at Harmony Beach Park, Montego Bay. Join us on location or watch and share your questions and thoughts on the JIS and OPM social media platforms. Come for the discussion on housing and land. Building Jamaica, we want to hear from you.
Summer 2023 does not officially end until September 23. But really, don't most of us consider it over the end of August and into the beginning of the month of back to school? I guess what I'm trying to say is the obvious. Summer is almost effectively done and it's now time to get back into serious learning mode. The new school year, starting next Monday, will bring new opportunities, new ideas, new relationships, new knowledge gained and even new challenges. Talking here now to Jamaica's future, what will you make of this next academic year? I wish you nothing but the best, whatever comes your way. I'm Adrian Atkinson, welcome to Jamaica, man.